I'd like to call this meeting of the Board of Education for the School District of Baraboo to order for Monday, October 24th, 2011 with low call. Mr. Borckenhagen.
Here.
Mr. Cummings.
Here.
Mr. McNevin.
Here.
Mr. Mearing.
Here.
Mr. Mortimer.
Here.
Mr. Beedro.
Here.
And Vodek here, continuing with the pledge which is behind the screen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would entertain a motion that it be resolved the Board of Education through the minutes of the October 10th, 2011 meeting as printed.
I move.
Second? Motion by Borckenhagen, seconded by Beedro, only discussion. Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
I'll abstain, Mary.
Motion carried with the abstention of Mr. Cummings.
And Mr. McNevin.
And Mr. McNevin. Brings us to the point of correspondence. I have one. I think it was given to all of the Board. It is a letter from Richard Bates in regards to the potential expansion, reconstruction of the high school track and football facility. I will interject that as correspondence.
I did, I want to interject that. I did call him this morning and have a brief discussion with him about the decisions that have been made and the work that's going to be moving forward. And I think his questions were answered.
Thank you. Not as correspondence, but just a note, many of you probably know Todd Brooks, who is a longtime district employee and custodian at North Freedom, passed away on Friday. And I just want to send out the district and board's condolences, his families and our thoughts and prayers. And just a side note, his funeral is tomorrow. That's all I have for correspondence. Any other Board members with correspondence? Any administrative correspondence?
Yes, I did receive communication from Hilda Hanch on behalf of the Baraboo Music Support Group, and this was regarding the patron drive. And I didn't have the time to get it into your Board packets, and I'll pass it down for you to take a look at. But we've been going back and forth about the fundraising efforts for the band, marching band uniforms, and she was happy to report that the drive raised over $11,000 from 87 businesses and families, and the donors are attached here, in an effort to augment the current marching band uniforms. And this paid for 27 marching band uniforms, a new drum major uniform, perfect match to what the existing uniforms are. They did arrive in time, for those of you that saw the homecoming parade and again at the halftime show. So I want to pass on our thanks to the music support group for their continued support of our music opportunities for students here at, in the Baraboo High School. And then, I don't do this very often, but we talk a lot about student test scores, and I wanted to highlight just a few of the positives that were in the Baraboo news today. Amy Flogel and the Key Club were out in the community over the weekend raking lawns of senior citizens, and she also provided her contact information if there was additional needs in the community. We are fortunate again to have our boys' cross-country team qualify for the state championship, so congratulations to them. We also had a member of the girls' cross-country sectional qualify for state, and we have one of our friends from GLW who's featured in one of the art classes there. So I'll just pass that down if you haven't had a chance to see the paper. So lots of positive things happening across the district.
That's all in one day.
All in one day.
Sign of things to come.
You bet.
Any additional correspondence? Hearing none, I'd like to move on to the portion of the agenda entitled Public Viewpoints. Do we have anybody here for public viewpoints tonight? Yes, if you would approach the microphone. If you're here for yourself, please state your name if you're speaking on behalf of the group, the name of the group.
Well, my name's Brian Caldenberg, and I just wanted to address the issues at the football track or the football field with, in regards to handicap. I know I talked to a couple of members of, well, I talked to Kevin and asked about where the handicap section is. There was three families there, including mine, on homecoming, and then all the kids got in front of it. We've asked them to move, they gave everybody funny looks, there were some adults that came in, we asked them, one of them moved and then came back later and stood in another area in front of one of the other families. I'm just hoping that we can do something, you know, if the game starts and somebody wants to sit there and there's nobody there, I don't see a problem with it. But if you have families that are sitting there and then they can't see, I had kids in the band, my mom couldn't see that good, the other people, I think they had family members in the band, they couldn't see it very good because everybody's being obstructed. And we ended up leaving at halftime. Part of it was because it was cold and the other part was because we couldn't see anything. So I'm hoping that something can be addressed with this.
It will be.
Okay. That was all I needed.
Thanks. Any other public viewpoints? Any other public viewpoints? Any other public viewpoints? Hearing none, I would like to move on to the portion of the agenda entitled Staff Recognition, and we have with us tonight Jennifer Schultz, who is our new ag teacher, and a couple of her students. So I would like to turn it over.
Do you want to wait a few minutes? Okay, do you want to start? You guys are ready. Thanks for coming.
I'm Samantha De Mars, and I'm the reporter of the Baraboo FFA chapter.
And I'm Terri Williams, and I am the treasurer of the Baraboo FFA chapter.
And we would like to first thank the school board for providing, for approving the FFA trip to go to the 84th National Convention in Indiana, and there was 12 students that had the chance to attend the convention in Indiana. And we were lucky enough to have an agronomy team. They had different levels of judging that they went to, and they made it as far as to go to nationals. So they went to nationals and they won, and yeah.
Well, at this time, we would like to turn your attention to the PowerPoint that highlights everything that we did on our trip.
Is there any questions about our PowerPoint?
It was awesome. Can you, do you know the history of the musical score that was behind it?
It's actually, like, each year you have a theme, like, you pick out a theme, and like, it's the Wisconsin FFA's theme. And there's also, like, we believe, or I believe, is the national theme, and I wasn't, like, I couldn't get the song for that, for the PowerPoint, but I used the Wisconsin one instead.
Thank you for sharing that with us. And although Ms. Schultz wasn't here with us tonight, I thank her for her involvement with our FFA program too, so. Crystal has a little token of recognition for you.
Thank you for your leadership and thank you for sharing.
That brings us to the portion of the agenda entitled Continuous School Improvement, and we have a group with us tonight to talk to us about the standards-based grading and assessment retakes. Whoever's going to take the lead?
My name's Deanne Linsor. I teach English and history at the high school, and I'm a teacher, so I have a handout. That's how we always start, right? I just want to kind of talk about how it all started with me. I'm going to present on the retakes portion. It was a progression. I've done a lot of research based originally on my PDP and then just based on educational interest on what the best practices are in grading in general. And then I ended up with summative assessments and the retake policy. And to be honest with you, when I first began the process, I had a kind of a hard time with retakes, as do a lot of educators. I was an excellent test taker. In fact, if I could make a living doing that, I could probably do that if I could. No, I love this. But anyways. Not everybody is a good test taker. Not everybody does show their best on every given day, and so I had it come to this through progression, like I said. Originally, I began just with letting students who failed the test retake. And as the years have gone by, this is my fourth year doing it, passing back there, this is my fourth year doing it, I've added a grade level each time, so now it's to the point where I do allow any student who didn't get 100% on a summative assessment to retake. And the reason why I leaned to that progression was because I felt very strongly that how dare I get in the way of somebody who wants to be perfect? How dare I get in the way of somebody who wants to master a topic? I really want to reach those C and B students who think that that's not good enough for them and give them the opportunity to master our learning standards and get to the point where they too have achieved what I want them to and what the state wants them to in the course. And so that's kind of where it all began. And again, you know, you have to go through some of the negatives and positives dealing with any major change. And one of the things I had to deal with was the unfairness to the students like me who do well on tests, and I was worried that perhaps they would feel like they were being slighted. But I've talked to a lot of them, and you can see a lot of their answers on the sheet, and this is for a senior level course that runs the gamut in regards to talent levels and achievement levels. I have students who, you know, are lower, higher, and everywhere in between. And out of the 68 students I polled, only one had a negative comment, and that was actually, I allowed them to put their grade points if they chose to, that was actually 2.5 grade point average person. So the one person who was negative wasn't even one of the higher level students. And I talked to several of them individually and candidly about it, and they just said, you know what, Mrs. Linsor, even us on a bad day may not be able to show you the best of our abilities, and we don't mind having retakes for everybody else because we all want to get to the same point. And I just thought, wow, what a bunch of genius kids. I mean, we really have good kids here who understand the progression, and they don't mind letting other students get to where they were. So that was, that was really positive for me. And then as far as the not preparing them to be able to take tests, because we all know that there's some situations in life that you just have to do your best the first time and the only time, and so I was worried that perhaps I was getting in the way of that. But then through the research and through reading a lot of articles, it's very rare that we don't get a second chance. I screw up all the time, and you screw up all the time, we all do, and most of the time we get to come back from that. And we're professionals and adults who have already been through our educational progression. These are kids, and they're not in the real world yet. And I just feel pretty strongly that the best way to prepare them to be in the real world is to give them the content to hit those learning standards that we've agreed upon are what's best. And so I'm helping them get to that level where they can achieve at the high level all of the time, hopefully. The other thing is, you know, that a lot of high-stakes tests that we do have to take, like the driver's test, the bar exam, the MCAT, the ACT, the SAT, you are allowed to retake those. And of course, there's a financial penalty for some of those and things like that. But as far as the retakes policy goes, in my class and in most of the classes of high school, it's not a gimme. They have to come to each of us, they have to initiate the process, they have to discuss with their parents, get the original signed, they have to come up to me with a plan of when they're going to take the retest, what they're going to do, study harder, maybe come in ELT before school, after school, help them really get to understand those learning standards, then find time on their own before school or after school to take the test. I don't allow them to do it during class time. They need to take that initiative and that responsibility on their own. And it's not the same test. Usually what I do is I try and come up with alternative questions for the same learning standard, usually in a different format. So if it was multiple choice, then I do short answer. If it was essay, maybe I'll do multiple choice and just mix it up a little bit so they're not overly prepared for it, and I'm still testing the standard and not the test, if that makes sense. So there is a, you know, just like when you have to pay 100 bucks or whatever it is now to take the ACT, there is a process they have to go through in order to take the retake and a responsibility they have to take upon themselves. But I think overall, it's a very positive experience. In the four years, like I said, that I've been doing this, I have had one student play me, and one student who was totally messing around with me, and I learned it pretty quick by the third test. And because of that, I write in my grading policy that it's at my discretion. So I was able to talk to that student individually, get their parents involved, and just say, I know what you're doing, and that's not cool, so we need to stop this retake policy and you need to take responsibility for your own actions. So out of four years, I don't think that was too bad. It was pretty easy to recognize and identify, and all in all, it's been a very positive experience, and you can tell by the responses that the students are really appreciating it as well. So it's all part of the learning standards program and getting to that point where everybody's on the same page that Mr. Latsi and Mr. Rother doing as well, so. Do you have any questions about retakes?
Is there a peer process here that allows peers to participate in this process?
You mean like?
Students to students?
Students to students, can they tutor each other?
Yeah.
I don't set that up for them, but I know a lot of them work together, you know, and study together, and I give them a standards sheet at the beginning of each unit, and they go through together and they check it off, and so they definitely collaborate with each other, but it's not something I necessarily see.
I applaud what you're doing so highly. I think if any of us were evaluated on our first tests in any shape or form, we would have serious problems. I think of early childhood development, if we only had one chance to learn how to walk, I don't think any of us would make it.
I would be, so I'll drive them.
Thank you. I think.
Right, and we all get to that point. We all want to get to the point where we're competent and meet those high standards, and I just want to give them every opportunity to be able to.
I ask about peers because I think many times a student can learn or understand what another student needs equally as well as we can, and sometimes better, and just to provide as many opportunities as possible for kids to hear and understand.
Right, right.
One question on that. Again, again, I think it can work both ways. Obviously, I know if I take it, you know, I'm not quite there, and I'm not gaming the system or anything, you know, maybe like the one student. I might not maybe put in my best effort in the first shot. That might be one philosophy, or is the other philosophy is, I want to get the best shot in there because I really, I'll take it again if I need to, but I really don't want to take it again.
And I think that the end result is what's important, is I want to make sure that all of my students are meeting the standards of the course. So whatever progression they need to take, and maybe for each student, it's different each time.
Sure.
Maybe one day it's a bad day, and maybe one day they didn't study what they needed to study. They knew the material, but they hadn't been able to put it into words. It could be, you know, a gamut of issues.
Sure.
But this allows them the ability to go back and run the standards, as opposed to just, you know, as a teacher, it's like, oh, all right, Civil War test, wow, you guys stunk at that one, let's move on. You know, this allows you to go back and make sure that everybody is to where they need to be before we move.
But there isn't a situation though, too, that, okay, you're holding the class back either, right?
Right, but this is an individual situation. So we continue to move on as a class, they have to find the time, and that's where, you know, they pay their dues.
Sure.
And I think they learn pretty quickly. It's easier, if it is a studying issue, it's easier just to do it right the first time, as opposed to having to go through this entire thing to move on. But we don't hold the entire class back. No, we continue on with the next unit and just get everybody caught up.
All right, great.
How much time do they have to make up a test after they take the original test?
They get, well, they get one week once they get the test back to them. So I tried to get the test back within three days, so then it ends up being about a 13 to 14 day period from the day they took the test. They get one week from when they get the test back, so they know what they got wrong, so they know where they have to refresh themselves. Do you have a question?
The retake policy that allows a student to achieve the same grade.
Correct.
Regardless of which pass they, which time they took the test.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, I'm not so sure I equate that to learning how to walk as far as a high school math or English test and learning how to walk as far as whether you get it right the first time or not. And you had mentioned that when you take an achievement test in real life, whether it be the LSATs or the CPAs, that if you do not do well the first time and you have to retake it, there's essentially a penalty, whether that's financial or time, and you're saying that for our students, the time, the additional time that they now have to put in is their penalty?
Their responsibility.
Their responsibility.
I think is a better way to phrase it, right. And as far as the grading goes, it is difficult as a teacher to come to terms, and that's why I started off with the discussion, it's a progression. Because, you know, you think, oh, you did well on the test, great, and so you want to reward those students. But we've learned through our research that grades don't really work as rewards, and they don't work as punishments. They just should show where they're at at any given time. And so if you're looking at it as grades for communication, if I change a grade or if I average a two test grades, like a retake and the original, and I average them, now I'm giving them a grade they didn't earn. You see what I'm saying? And so that makes it a little bit of a responsibility on my side, and it feels like I'm fudging with that, and I should really, in true standards-based grading, I should grade them at any given time where they are, communicate. So that's why I don't average them together. Does that kind of answer your question about the two different grades? Is that what you're talking about?
No, not really, but, okay.
Do you think we're penalizing those students who come in and succeed at first?
Well, I don't know, this is kind of my first blush at it, whereas you guys have been looking at this for a long period of time.
Correct.
That would certainly be open to inquiry. You know, it's a broad generalization when you say that grades aren't motivating factors. Quite contrary, the grades are a motivating factor for a lot of students. Maybe not for all students, and definitely not for some. But there is a fair amount of students, I would imagine, that the grade is the motivating factor. Now certainly, I can, I can understand this, you know, you give me as many chances of it as I want, I'm going to give you positive remarks also. But what do you, what about the concerns of the students that are doing it right the first time or are trying their hardest? How do, how do we measure GPA, Bill, when you've got, how do you compare the two? You were saying, we're saying that a grade is a measurement of time, at a particular time. You assess a grade, and here it is at this particular time. I ask everybody that I want to assess your grade at this particular time, and yet I've got some other students that aren't quite at an A or A+, so I'll give them a week to assess it later. I'll give you another chance to let them assess it. I understand that it's a fair recognition of where they're at if they come in a week later and they ace it. That is important to recognize that they have learned the standards. Is it the same? Is it the same grade?
Can I answer that?
Yeah.
You kind of brought in the part about walking a little bit ago, about walking, and as your child learns to walk, you know, I don't know how many children you have, but you know they don't all.
Too, too many.
I'm sure they don't learn to walk at the same time, but the end result was the same, correct?
Yeah, I mean, it's a nice analogy when you're comparing a toddler learning how to walk.
But I think it's the same thing.
No, I really don't think.
If you build it up to a high school, if you build it up to a high school thing, is the purpose the grade that they get, or is it that they learn the skill?
To some it is. To some, it's the achievement of the grade. To some, it's the process of doing what they're told at the time they're told to do it and mastering that when they should have it mastered, because that's when the first take.
But as a district, where are we headed?
Well, I'm asking.
Well, we're looking to divide. Oh, excuse me. I think, you know, the board is at somewhat of a disadvantage because like you alluded to, Sean, the school improvement leadership team has been reading and researching and discussing all of these different grading and assessment pieces for over two years, and a lot of work has been done. And I think, as Deanne has talked about, it's been a continuum of learning for some of our staff. And so, you know, we can talk about the walking, it's much more complex than that in terms of what does a grade mean? And other administrators jump in here too, if you want to add to that. This has been something that has now gone from our school improvement leadership team to the building level. And a lot of people like Deanne and others have been able to, you know, take those risks and try some of these, these grading, best practices in grading in their classrooms. And, you know, we're interested in the end result and how kids get, kids are different, and kids learn differently, and how they get there isn't going to look the same. And it is a philosophy, you know, and.
Yeah, and I'll just kind of jump in, Sean, if I understand you correctly, part of your concern is about whether or not it's fair or equitable for kids to get multiple times to retake a test, and how's that compared to a student who got an A the first time through? Is that inaccurate?
I think at the, yeah, I think at a base level, that's a good starting point.
So based upon that, one of the conversations that we're having, and it'll be coming forth to you through this board, and not through distant future, is a way to try to address that concern as it relates to grade point averages and class rank, because that really is something that does play a role in there. And the reality of the situation is that less than half the high schools across this country are on loose class rank, and we still do it. And that tends to be where we start to have some dialogue and conversation concerns about, is it fair? You know, I think in the end, we look at it this way, and we've all gone and seen a doctor at some point in your life for a variety of, you know, reasons. We don't know how many times that physician took to pass his boards, okay? But in the end, he's been, he or she had been certified as a licensed physician. We don't know if they were first in the class, 10th in the class, 50th in the class, passed the first time he took, 50 tries to pass the boards, we don't know that. But they've reached that level of attainment where they have, they have the experience and expertise that the state or the federal, you know, at the federal level says they're good to go. And so it's really about a criterion reference system as opposed to a norm reference system, and that's one of the flaws beginning to with GPAs and class rank, is we're talking about comparing students. And comparing students in a class of 2011, in the 20, in class of 2012, in class of 2013, they're all different. And so in some cases, kids are benefiting or being penalized based upon where that they're born, based upon how competitive their class happens to be. And we could use a variety of sports analogies to address that situation as well.
We do that all day.
Right now. But the point is that what Deanne's talking about, what you're going to hear more about tonight, and I think what Lauren was trying to allude to is the fact that it's based upon, where do we get students to be at the end? Have we given the opportunity to master and prove they know all the objectives and can perform at the level we want them to perform at? Or are we more concerned about.
Or are we more concerned about they can perform on it at that particular level on October 24th? If it takes them until October 26th to do it, I think we should be all about trying to make sure they get there by October 26th. And I think we've all are guilty of failing at some point in life at a variety of different things. Hopefully we have been helped, or we've helped in a fight over that.
And this is just one piece of it. I think maybe after you hear a few others speak tonight, it'll all kind of come together and then we can address questions.
And just a comment about how they're saying that because I give them every chance to pass tests. I honestly, I've had a lot of discussions, I have a discussion base, this is a discussion-based class. And I get to know my students pretty well. And I don't think that they're saying that just because they like me or they like the situation. I think that they honestly are commenting on their learning, which as an educator is a very exciting thing to happen. So I really think they appreciate it just by the learning aspects. I don't think that they're trying to just kiss up or respond to a positive situation. I really don't.
Right, and I understand the concept that all students are going to get there at a different time. They're all going to reach their learning goal at different pacing. And you're talking five days difference. You're talking, the test is on Monday, I graded, I get it back on Wednesday or Thursday. You have until the following Wednesday or Thursday.
Correct.
That isn't pacing. I mean, from my point of view, that you're talking about kids that are learning at a different rate of five days to make that's preparation and not pacing.
And they can do it multiple times as long as we involve the parent in the process. I guess it makes sense that. But if they need more than just one retake, that's fine with me. It's all about getting to that end point. And it's all about grades as communication. And I think that's a different, that's what you were talking about, philosophy. It's something that's, you know, that's been kind of a revolution of sorts in the education world and that's, that's the direction I think that this is heading. So it's about communicating grades at any given time, not necessarily about criterion reference percentage-based.
I think too, if you look at a lot of the comments that the students are taking, are making, I think in a lot of ways, she's holding me at a lot more accountable for their learning than a teacher who doesn't allow for a retake. A teacher who doesn't allow for a retake provides that assessment and then moves on. And so those students who didn't prepare at all are like, okay, well, we're moving on to the next topic. We're moving on to the next concept. I don't have to worry about that anymore. Whereas students in this class, if they aren't satisfied with the grade that they have, there is an accountability factor to go back, to re-prepare, to relearn that material. It may be that five days is sufficient for that. You know, who knows? At this age, developmentally, cognitively, where these students are right now, a fight with their boyfriend in the hallway could make or break a test grade in third hour history class. So I think if you go back and look at what the students are saying, they're saying she's holding me at a much higher level of accountability for knowing this information.
If I understand this as well, it's also choice. I mean, the student chooses to re-engage, which is something I think that we're very much wanting to support to create a sense of self-accountability that I wish to improve.
So if I took the first test and got a 70 and took it the second time and got a 90, how would you grade him on his report card?
The 90 goes into the grade book, the end result, where he is at the end.
Maybe I would just like to add to all the conversation. I think the important piece here is what does the grade mean? And I think our purpose right now in our district is we want the grade to truly accurately reflect what the student knows and is able to do. And so some of the things we're talking about, you know, whether it's preparation or playing the game or, you know, needing more time, those are things that shouldn't be reflected in that communication to the parents or to the child. This is what my child is able to do or knows. So if those are other issues we want to communicate about, let's communicate through a citizenship grade or, you know, let's talk about some of the behaviors behind that, intervene on that. But we don't, we want to keep it separate so that we're being truly accurate with our reporting. I think that's the key issue here. And so if a student does poorly on an assessment and yet days later, weeks later, they could, they could show us in a different way that they did learn it. It's not true accurate communication to just give a C to that student or maybe they could be an A. And, you know, that pays forward as they go into post-secondary, what they really know and are able to do to help them make good decisions with their future.
Really what we're talking about is best practices. So at the end of the day, I hate to use this analogy, but I've got a pile of learning. Whereas before, with the old system, the pile of learning was here. Hopefully under the new system, at the end of the day, all the pile of learning is higher as a group as a whole. So, and nobody's really being held back by this system. It's actually improving it in the end game. Best practice, is correct? Okay.
Let's talk a little bit more about the standards-based grading and I think that will tie some of this in better.
My name's David Beth. I teach math up here at Fairwood High Schools. And Scott Lotsi teaches physics here at the high school as well. He's passing out kind of another handout. We've got some nice color in there that kind of is what we're trying to describe here. Spring, we kind of got the go-ahead to do a team talk, AP Physics, AP Calculus class, between the two of us because we had a lot of common themes that were occurring between our two courses. Instead of kind of doubling the instruction, we thought we might be a little bit more efficient in explaining what we're doing here. And so what we ended up doing during our discussion time during the summer in our, how are we going to construct this team talk course? Is we both had kind of, Scott kind of turned on some readings with regards to standards-based and he was kind of eager to get the go-ahead on it. And so we talked to Mr. Loss and tried to see if it would be okay if we could just implement a fully kind of standards-based grading assessment program into the course. And we got the green light for it and we decided that let's give it a shot and see what happens. And so we kind of created a framework for it. And it was very interesting because with the students that we've got in the AP Physics and the AP Calculus class, you've got a lot of high achieving students in there. And for many of them, or if not all of them, this is going to be a massive break from what they're used to in terms of a hundred point scale, in terms of seeing a number on their score that they get a 92 on a test that just goes into the file with the other ones. And in fact, giving them standards into what they were going to be learning. And we had some conversations right at the very beginning of the year regarding what we were going to be doing during the year. And we've been kind of touching base with them every couple of weeks to see how it is going. We've got some really good positive feedback from them and they were all gung ho about doing it. And so on this handout that we got, Scott's kind of started off going through and he's kind of walked us through kind of what we've been doing this year.
Actually, we started out at the beginning deciding, you know, looking at what does a grade actually show? And we came up with three things. This is from the research and conversations we've had between ourselves and our other peers that the most important thing is we want to provide feedback to the students. Let them know exactly what they're doing and how well they're doing on it. The next one is to provide feedback to us. And this is for us really, really amazing. We can see instantly using this system where students are achieving high, highly achieving, and when they're also struggling. And the last one is kind of what grades are in general, documenting student progress. So if you take a look at the upper right here, you have a normal grade book. Across the top, you have assessment, test one, test two, test three, project one, project two, and homework. All those scores are averaged together and you get a grade. And all we can really see if we look at this, I know the print's a little small. We tried to save as much paper as possible. But all I can really get from this is Bill and John, they're not doing so well. They get a D and an F and then everyone else is in that B, C range. Right? Unless you're the teacher or the student remembers exactly what's on test one, it doesn't really tell you anything. And if you go to the bottom left here, normal grading, before students, it was a points game. I need to accumulate this many points to get this letter grade. And so an example out of one of my previous grade books from my first year, one of my students earned 777 out of 889 points, bringing them a grade of an 87.4. And those points came from homework tests, quizzes, labs, projects, all of these things. And under this new system, the standards-based grading, we're looking at not so much how many points they earn, but what is their level of mastery on a specific standard, all right? And this evidence comes from the same thing. We're not, not giving quizzes or tests or projects or labs. We're actually doing it just in the same way, just with a small change. So if you flip to the next page, AP Calculus, AP Learning Objectives. So this is part of the standards that we gave out for the AP Calculus portion. I have a list of these for the AP Physics portion. And this is the standard exactly what they need to do. So students need to, 1A, 1A1, quickly graph basic functions using transformations. They know exactly what that is.
They get this handout at the beginning of the year.
They get the handout.
So they know what the end goal is.
They know exactly what they're trying to do. And so the next one says projectile motion quiz. This was an old quiz I used to give. And if you flip over that, that over, right before the cover sheet, this is the new version of that quiz. On the right, we have the standards listed. This is a quiz I gave, this was a couple of weeks, last week. The standard is listed right on there, what it needs to do. And then right below the standard is a rubric. Shows them exactly what I'm looking for to get a three, a two, a one, or a zero. A three being mastery of that standard, a two being intermediate, one being basic, and a zero being minimal evidence of mastery. So the quiz question linked to the standard, they know exactly what they get. And so when this is graded, up at the top, there's the grading rubric. And they get a three, two, one, or zero in each one of those boxes. There is no total score at the top, no nine out of 10 congratulations. There's a three in A2 dot one saying, all right, you understand that, you've mastered that one. And so the students can see exactly as soon as they get their quiz back, what standards they've mastered, what standards they're meeting, and what standards they're still struggling on. The tricky part with this is keeping track of all the data. And that's the color page and I'll let Deanne talk about this because this is a screenshot out of his grade book today.
So this was the biggest, the bigger challenges that we had before the school year started was how are we going to make this work assessing-wise and recording-wise? With our infinite campus kind of being on a hundred point scale and trying to get something that will work, we started playing around with Excel a little bit. And what ended up happening is, forgetting about the summary page right now, looking at the individual students, down the left-hand side there, I have all those standards that were on the sheet listed down that side. And along the top, going across each column, is each different assessment that has taken place throughout the semester so far. And there should be, I think there's 10 in there because I just recorded the 10th one in there today. And I have it set up and we have our grade books set up similarly so that it color codes it based on if they get a three, a two, or a one, or a zero. It goes from green at three to red at zero. And I can enter in, as you can see on that previous quiz, there were only assessing specific standards on that quiz. And one of the things we've gone away from is we've done, instead of less frequent big quizzes, we've gone to more frequent smaller quizzes. Instead of giving a quiz with three questions asking the exact same thing, so if the kid doesn't get it, they don't get it the first time, the second time, the third time, and the grade just plummets, they get it once, three separate times. So it's kind of, kind of going off of what Deanne was talking about, it's kind of a built-in reassessment. They don't get it the first time, okay, now we're going to see it the second time and the third time. And I can look right at, after entering the grades, at the proficient student, I can see right away that, okay, they're getting most of the topics, things are going well there. The intermediate student, you can kind of see how it kind of gets a little bit yellower. Then the basic student, it's got some holes to fill. And the way that we end up grading in this, in our class for this is they have to show us three attempts at a standard before we give them a grade on it. So that way they can, we show a trend that they actually, it's not a one-time shot, ah, you got lucky that day or you did poorly that day. But there's a definite trend that we can get a more accurate reflection. And then that kind of all gets put together on that summary page up in the upper left-hand corner. So once again, I have all the standards down the left-hand side. And then along the top is each individual student. So when I look at this page, I can see down a couple of columns there. I've got a couple of yellowish columns that, those students I need to talk to and see about addressing some issues. And then likewise, if I look across a couple of rows, I've got a couple of orangish rows in there. That's something that we need to go back and hit or discuss more throughout our content as we make it through the course. As far as kind of going back and pacing, because of the construction that we've gone through with our assessments, it's all kind of a spiraling assessment. So we're not stopping the conversation necessarily, but everything, it works well in our classes where what we do builds off itself so we can go back and everything. I can ask one question and hit four different standards and hit different, you did this part wrong, but you used that correctly here, so this goes well. And then their grade is at the top. The kids get their own record-keeping sheet and they're going through and instead of just getting an 82 and an 85, 93, filing it away, they're recording it on their sheet as they go through as kind of a backup system as well to track it. But the thing that's been the most uplifting for me, at least in the AP Calculus part, is the conversations that kids have been coming to me with have been about learning objectives and not, I got an 82 on this, I don't get it. They're specifically going, I don't understand this specific topic. They're coming to me and saying, I need help at this topic. And it's been a lot easier because they've been able to focus their learning and target the objectives that they need help at. And they're going to see it again. We're doing a midterm next week, or the end of this week, actually, and it's going to be another chance for them, you know, to show that they're doing well or they've picked up on those specific topics that they know they had issues with. And then the next couple of pages, just that big black and white, that's, I think that's the, which one did we do? Is that the basic student? The basic student is blown up so you can kind of see the numbers and stuff. And then the backside is the summary page, just in black and white.
So you can see the single screen there. I know the most powerful thing for me on this is looking at the summary page. I can look down the column and see what students are overall getting it or overall struggling. If you look at the third column over, that student, they're struggling. And I can address that student individually to see what I can do to help them meet their needs.
Through ELT time or something.
Through ELT or other interventions that we have. But I can also look horizontally and see about in the middle of the page, there's a few greens, but there's a lot of yellows and oranges. What can I do to better explain that standard to the group? So as a feedback tool for teachers, it's really great. It tells you exactly what your students are getting and what they're not getting, almost right. I mean, you just have to grade it and boom, it's right there. Yeah. And then just the last couple of slides on that last page. Standards-based grading is not, it's not a four-point scale and that's something that we're talking about as we're building. It's not just changing how we score something, oh, instead of taking out a hundred points, you can take it out of four. We're actually changing the way we assess the work, looking at individual standards. And I think the best part is our students really like this. It's not a guessing game. They know exactly what they need to know and how it's going to be assessed. They get the standard and the rubric. So they know, okay, this is what I need to know, this is how he's going to assess it, and I can show that.
Well, yeah, for like a midterm, I was talking about, we're doing a review with the kids right now. They were all given a standard. We've got 18 kids and I've assessed on 20 standards at this point. So they each got their own standard. And they came up with, we gave them a form, just kind of like a blank quiz, and they gave us an example of a homework problem that they did like that. They write out the standard in their, in normal terms, an example of what a zero, a one, a two, a three would be. And then Wednesday, they're going to turn it in and we're going to put it all together and that's going to be part of their review packet. So that way they all have an example of every type of problem, every type of standard, and how it'll be assessed and so they'll be, have something to prepare for for the midterm.
And the other thing is, it's not rigid. There are, the really only deadlines we have is first semester ends in January and the AP test is in May. That's it. If it takes them, you know, to break apart a vector, if it takes them until November, that's okay. Because our goal is can they do it in May on the AP test? And then the last slide is just somebody who's done some research on it. The main focus is to provide feedback from students, the parents, and the teacher about how students are performing a specific predefined learning targets. Puts the focus on learning skills and content and not just, ooh, I brought in a box of Kleenex, give me five points. Any questions?
So to bring these two pieces together, the earlier presentation and this, the standards-based focus allows students to progress at a rate at which you can document and focus on the learning, not the grading. But still, at the end of the day, in May, when they take the AP, they don't get to retake it per se. So you have preparation, you have working toward a goal, and you have the final assessment of the goal. But that final assessment takes place outside of, but integrated into your preparation. So you're going to get. So you're going to get a lot of feedback about how this system works by how many of your students really pass the AP test.
Yeah.
And it's, it's been interesting for me, because, uh, I've, I've got two sections of, two sections of calculus. I've got the one section that we're team-teaching that I'm doing this way for the grading, and then I've got my other section that I'm doing like I've always done it before, because I want, I want to see at the end, okay? Because the end goal is the same in both cases, the AP Calculus test, I want to, we're going to have the same amount of material done. I, I'm enjoying so far the change in the one class, because we're having a lot more discussion. It, it almost feels more relaxed. It's not like we're trying to hit deadline after deadline after deadline, because we asked ourselves this during the summer when we were trying to prep this, is what truly is our job? Our job is to educate students and get them to come out and learn something when they're done. And the kids, our students, we're hoping, learn something. Not, did they get this number, this number, this number, but at the end, are all of our students, have they met our objectives for the course? And that's our goal.
Well, in most collegiate environments today, uh, standards-based grading is the norm. So, you know, we're, we're moving in that direction. I would only ask, again, wherever there's opportunity, to have peer collaboration as a part of the process, um, that enriches both the student who is receiving it, as well as the student who is giving it. I think it's excellent work. Thank you.
One thing to note, and again, my daughter is in your class, so I mean, I've, I've had this presentation once at parent-teachers conference, and, uh, but one thing that I was impressed, and I mean, maybe you can even elaborate, obviously, you even have the example, you have another class. And of course, each class is different, but you, you're telling me, at parent-teachers conference, that you're actually able to move this class along faster as a result of this. And you may, they may, in the, and end, learn a lot more as a result of this type of process.
Yeah, and it's, I don't know totally if it's from the structure, how we were setting up our course, or if it's because of this, but, um, part of my thinking is, because of we're giving the more frequent little assessments, we're not doing the mid-chapter test, end-of-chapter, mid-chapter quiz, end-of-chapter quiz, chapter test kind of pattern that I was doing in the other thing, uh, and instead just kind of just this rolling assessment, it's like, I think, every other class period, we're giving a quiz of some type, uh, we're able to assess that, keep going, and, you know, I'm, I'm probably going to be able to get to PC material that we haven't been able to cover before, about an extra month and a half, probably, with taking calculus, for me at least.
Well, I want to give him a hand for doing this. I would jump up and down and cheer, but that would make a little overkill. But truly, this is teacher leadership, and this is where the change is happening. You know, this is action research. They're trying this out in the classroom, they're looking at the impact on student learning, and that's what we're here to do, is to impact student learning. So, you know, kudos to all of you guys that are providing that leadership, um, at the high school, as well as across the district. Many of these practices are taking place. And, um, you know, if change is going to happen, it's going to be because of teachers like this in the classroom. Great job.
Thank you.
Brings us to the portion of the agenda entitled reports. And first up is the legislative update, for which I will turn to Mr. Maring.
Okay, I just have a few items here, and I'll try to make them brief and quick. Senate Bill 22 and Assembly Bill 51 is dealing with the independent charter school. Uh, that's been bouncing around, it, it has, it received a little more attention lately. It, it may, it sounds like it's going to be going to the Joint Finance Committee, they have not set a date. Frequently, it seems like these dates are set almost just a couple of days in advance. Uh, but I've communicated with all four legislators our concerns that we have on that. Fred Clark said he'll be voting against it when it comes to the floor of the Assembly. I've also been in discussion with Senator Luther Olson. Uh, they are making some changes. Um, they are still talking about creating a board, uh, before the governor had quite a few votes on it, but still, even with the new structure, it's basically the governor's party, whoever's in charge will have control of that board. Um, I've communicated the concerns that, uh, there may be a potential, uh, conflict with our state constitution, because that, some of these things are usually controlled by the Department of Public Instruction. Uh, also, there's negative fiscal impact that could occur with school districts, and also taking away local control on decisions regarding education of children in our schools. Legislature's also moving ahead on a separate subject on mandate relief. Uh, I'm sure that, uh, that we'll be addressing some of those changes in policy with the administration, uh, we'll be reviewing those changes, and we'll be bringing those back to the board. Last item I have is regarding school funding. Uh, there's, um, I'm hearing that there's a potential that there's going to be another school funding proposal. Uh, hopefully, the governor can support that, because he recently stated that we have many jobs available in our Wisconsin, but not enough workers with the skills to fill those jobs. And so school funding reform, I think, needs to be addressed, so that we have the tools to, to have the skilled workforce that our state requires. So, that is my report.
Okay, thank you. And just to note, um, Mr. Maring, I think you copied the entire board when you have your correspondence with legislators, or is it?
I can do that.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to point out that, uh, when you're communicating with them, you're communicating as a board member.
Yes.
And your statements are statements that come from you as a board member. You're not making a representation of speaking for them.
No, no, I am, I am speaking just as myself. Uh, but there are some things, and one of the things, as far as the independent charter school, uh, that was part of the save our school proposal, and so, um, and we voted for that as, as a full board. And so, um, I would only represent the whole board if we've had a board resolution regarding that. And, um, and coming up shortly, probably in December, we will have proposals that will be brought to the whole state association, uh, that the board will need to review, uh, because again, it's, as we represent that at the education convention. So as we support those proposals, then I know that this is what the board wants. If, if they vote no against something, then obviously I have to express those concerns to our legislators, too.
Well, I appreciate your staying on top of that, and I appreciate the clarification for the rest of the board. Brings us to the portion of the agenda for the strategic action plan update. Dr. Rosenthal?
Well, I included in your board packets the subgroups that are now, now formed around the critical issues and areas that the district will be working on this year. And you can see that we have facilitators assigned to each group. I do know that at least one group has already scheduled a time to meet, to finalize the action steps, and to, uh, kind of expand the responsibility for those areas. So we will continue to come back to the board as we make progress in those areas and report out. Are there any questions about those groups? We've added a few more names since this was included in your board packet.
Hearing none, I'd like to move on to the open enrollment update. Ms. Scott?
Um, included in your packet are, um, some summary documents, um, based on our open enrollment numbers for this school year, both, um, looking at numbers of students coming, non-resident students coming into Araboo. Um, we had a total of eighty-two students coming in under open enrollment, as well as, um, resident students, um, leaving Araboo, which then school, um, and other districts, and that number, um, is at, currently at one hundred and three. Um, I've broken it out by grade level, so you can see both by district and grade level, where, which grade-level students are opting to either come in or, um, go out of Araboo. Um, and just a reminder that, um, Crystal noted in her statement in the email that went out with the board packet, that Appleton, Ransburg, Monroe, Northern Ozaki, and Waukesha all have virtual programs. So, you see those districts listed, those are virtual, so online, open enrollment programs.
Board members have any questions in regards to open enrollment?
Um, one question, obviously, you just at the end highlighted the, the fact that we have quite a, or quite a few students that are going to virtual schools. It, it's not on our report, but how many students do we have currently in the Baraboo School District that are online students?
That, that's a really good, timely question, and Rhonda Kopfheimer is going to be presenting to the board at the next meeting on the enrollment numbers for our online.
Okay, because obviously that has an impact. As students are, are looking at online opportunities, they have to understand that we have online opportunities here, and there's a lot of things that we can do as a school district to support those online students, even if they're home-schooled students, that another school district at the other side of the state cannot do to support those students. So, I'll, I'll look forward to that report.
Was there any big reason for the jump in the transfers to the DOWs? I mean, we normally have, according to this report, we have about ten students that are continuing, but all of a sudden we had nine more go out this year?
Um, I'm not aware of any, you know, outstanding circumstances that would precipitate that. They're not, you know, running any new kinds of programs or, or anything like that. So, you know, it could be, you know, oftentimes with open enrollment families, sometimes it's an employment issue, where, you know, parents are working in that community, so it's just easier for them, you know, to, to drop the kids off at school on their way to and from work, kind of thing. But I'm not aware of any outstanding factors, Sean, that would indicate that.
We have thirty of our kids going to SOC, too?
Um, SOC does have, um, a charter school at the elementary level, which is a big draw, um, for many, um, elementary students. And that's, um, certainly, um, something that, um, Araboo is looking at. We hope to apply for a charter school grant, um, later this spring, through Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction. So, um, we'll certainly be bringing more information to the board as we begin that planning process, but that is, it is pretty popular at the elementary level.
Is that charter school, the one in Merrimack?
Yes, it is.
And most of those are the families that had previously been involved with our elementary charter school here. And I want to thank Danny for, um, this is a, a new responsibility for her this year, taking on the open enrollment that, um, I had previously worked on, so thank you, Danny.
Does, does that charter school go up to fifth grade?
I believe so.
Yeah, we've already had contact from at least one of the families inquiring whether we're looking at a secondary charter school, as opposed to the elementary, because many of those students will be at that age.
Any further questions?
In a previous, uh, meeting, we had discussed the numbers of home-school students in the district, and, uh, if memory serves correct, just, uh, a concern that we should be focusing on what the district might be able to do to bring some of those home-school students back into the district. And I think Doug's comment regarding online stuff would be something that we ought to be looking at.
And Rhonda can talk to that as well, because she has, um, done mailings to that group. It is a very organized group in our community, and one that's been in place for some time, but the numbers are, are fairly high.
Would it make any sense to contact those home-school kids with parents and see why they're homeschooling them? Would that make any sense?
We, we sent a survey out, maybe a couple of years ago, and I believe, um, we had a meeting, that was probably long, about four years ago, um, inviting them in to talk about what their needs were, but it might be time to do that again.
It'd be interesting to find out why they're homeschooling their kids.
Yeah, it would be.
Okay. There's nothing else? Thank you for the update. Brings us to the portion of the agenda, the notification of the early graduates for 2012. That list was included in your packet, there isn't any action that is required from the board that I'm aware of, just an FYI. And then next up is the update, and for some, it's more of a initial discussion in regards to the Jackon Middle School building, primarily the exterior wall. That was a topic of discussion briefly at the Buildings, Grounds, and Transportation Committee meeting last week. And I think all the board received information in regards to that, so everybody was hopefully on the same page as far as what the issues are. Mr. Wong, or Mr. Cummings as Chair of BG&amp;T, I don't know if you want to continue with that discussion?
Well, just to bring everybody up to speed on this here, it's, uh, when we met on the eighteenth, we had a preliminary report from MSA and our staff there about the continuing, continuing deterioration of the outside brick on outside the wall. This has been going on since, uh, 2003, when we first started on this gym, wasn't it? So, as parts of the school, and it's the strapping and different support that holds the brick on the outside, not the, the main structural part of the block and stuff, but, um, just the design and what have you, it's deteriorating, and we're going to have to eventually go back and re, rebuild the walls into higher specs. So, uh, as of right now, they're determining
Which is on.
How to go about do this, do it, and, uh, we have some funds set aside for next year, and our maintenance budget, that we'll probably swing it over to, uh, take care of this problem, I guess, so. Jim's ready to get your data?
Well, I think probably the next step, I mean, we realize that we have an issue here, and even our steel expert over there said, wow, this doesn't look too good, so...
Not much makes me say wow.
I, I think, um, we feel that probably the next step is to see to what extent the damage has occurred, and, uh, we would like to, uh, remove brick in, you know, at least a couple, uh, spots on each of the three walls, uh, maybe potentially even three spots, uh, especially directly above the lintels, where we can look at the steel where we had the problem above the, uh, windows in the commons area, and then just some of the open areas. We really feel that we're going to find the same conditions that we found, uh, above the, or around the commons area, and, uh, in the west wall of the gymnasium, we'd like to do that, uh, yet before the snow flies. And the intent would be to have the mason, um, grind the bricks out, uh, allow us to inspect what the cavity looks like, see what the damage is in there. One would be directly above a lintel in some of the worst locations, so we can look at the steel in there, uh, in, in at least two places. And then have them, uh, put the brick back in. I mean, obviously, the border's not going to be the same, everything, but it won't be like we have a piece of plywood on it, or a piece of steel over it for the winter, so that we can begin the process of remediating, um, some portion of it anyway next summer. And so that's kind of the point we're at, is, is seeking permission to go ahead and get the study done.
Do you, do you want that as a motion from the board?
I think that would be appropriate.
I would so make that motion, that we go ahead and check it out.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
Well, yeah, could you clarify what the motion, check it out means? I mean, are we going out for an RFP for repair, repair and replacement? Are we, we're just doing simple, just the...
Yeah, at this time, we'll probably, uh, use the same mason that we used, uh, to investigate, uh, the commons, and just hire him to take out, I don't know, what was it, about eight or ten brick, maybe, at, at a spot in about six to nine different spots.
I mean, because clearly, these pictures demonstrate a problem greater than eight or ten bricks wide.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. Uh, if, if we find the same conditions that we found on the west gymnasium wall and the commons wall, we probably will be removing all of the brick.
Um, again, yeah, when I look at this, and then, and again, I'm not, I'm not a brick expert, and all I can look at and saying, yeah, there are probably some very, very serious issues here. What I have a concern, and again, we can't really talk about it too much tonight, but I would like to have us to have a future discussion, not just about this building, but all of our buildings, because are there other future potential wow's out there that we're not addressing? And maybe that has to start with BG&amp;T, and then they bring a report to us. But, um, we have a five-year plan with lots of roofs that we were way past warranty on, and maybe we need to address the whole overall picture versus right now, or seem to be going as the pieces start to really fall apart. And that's a concern that I have.
Well, I think the whole intent of our five-year plan, and, well, the philosophy anyway, was to protect the building envelope, which is the walls, the windows, the doors, and the roofs. If you can keep the weather out of the building, you can have a much easier time of maintaining the interior of the building. And even though, um, we do have roofs out of warranty, um, this definitely rises to the top of the priority list, so if we have, uh, if we have money available, we're going to have to attack this. Building's only thirty-five years old, we have buildings that we've used for a hundred years, um, we, we need to repair this building to make sure it's the last another fifty years.
And I'm not discounting it, because obviously, just even from the pictures, I can see this is a serious issue, but I'm saying, as we transpire forward, we have some fairly sizable potential projects out potential projects out there, and maybe it'd be better if we addressed those now versus when the leaks start coming through the roof. And so, that's what I'm looking at, is trying to be proactive rather, maybe, I'm not saying that this is that case, but rather than being reactive to the situation.
Get an argument for me.
So, can, should we do that as a full board, or should we schedule that for BG&amp;T?
Doug, what we're doing right now is we're taking, we're taking what we have budgeted every year for maintenance, and I understand what your idea is there, but our maintenance budget is so much, and this is what we're attacking, the stuff that needs the attention right now, as for the walls, the track, and I understand.
I'm looking at long-range planning here, Gary.
I understand that funds aren't quite, aren't available to replace.
I'm not saying that, but I need, we need to look at that and saying, if it's not available, then we need to at least address that to the community and saying, we may have some serious long-range issues here, that the only ways that we're going to do that is either taking it out of the education funds, you know, teachers and so forth, or we have to address it and saying that there may be a need for additional funds, that outside of the, outside of what the state and everybody else gives us.
That's true, but right now, as far as, we're gaining a little bit of ground on as far as our maintenance budget because of cost-saving methods that went in to affect over the course of the last four to five years. Some of that stuff is starting to pay dividends now where we do actually have some funds available. Not much, not as much as needed, but it's, we're doing the best we can.
Well, one thing about this wall, the middle school, the way I understand, and the way Al was talking the other night, this might be a safety issue too. So, this is something I assume that we should deal with quite soon, if I understood Al correctly.
Well, just, just to clarify, this, this is a, it's not a structural wall, it's a facade. So, in essence, the entire facade brick could be removed, and the building is still going to be standing. But part of the issue that was shown in the slides is that because of the twists and turns that are happening with the metal plates and the block that are there, the water's finding its way into the buildings. And maybe just a point of clarification, Mr. Cummings, if, if we're trying to decide what exactly it is we're motioning for, it's, it's to do a preliminary investigation of the structural integrity of the exterior brick facade.
Right, and possible cost of remediation, right, Jim?
I think that would be the next step.
I, I think you go right to that step.
Once we have the study.
Let's authorize the RFP for...
Mr. Cummings, you'll change your motion, and Mr. Mortimer, second the motion?
Yes.
Do you understand what?
What's the motion again?
Well, I'm asking that we go just beyond the investigative stage and give permission to do an RFP, so we can find out, how much is it going to take to replace not only the wall, the one wall in question, but actually, we've got to work our way around the building, correct?
Yeah, right now, we're just looking at the three walls of the south wing, but we also feel that there's going to be window replacement involved. I mean, we're, we'll definitely be removing the windows, and you can see some of them have rusted through already, so those are going to have to be replaced. Doesn't make a whole lot of sense to be replacing thirty-five-year-old windows or placing them back into the wall. We probably should replace them. And then I think Ed brought up a good point at the, at the BG&amp;T committee meeting, in that that would give us the opportunity then to put some support structures in place to help brace those lintels up, so you don't have that great big span that's nearly thirty feet in length without any midway support points. We would look at that too as part of that projected cost. I don't think we're to the stage yet where we're talking about general contractors. I think right now, we'd just be looking at projected costs.
No, but clearly, we need to more, do more than just assess. I mean, we need to have a full understanding of the extent of the issue, so that we can then talk about how to approach it and solve it.
Agreed.
Any further clarification?
Can you read the motion now?
Excellent.
I'm pretty, I'm pretty clear on it. Well, the original motion was to...
Check it out.
Check it out.
Pretty high-tech there, Gary.
Further clarified to investigate the integrity of the exterior brick facade, which was then motioned for, or suggested for, an amended motion of proceeding with the RFP. Once that has been done, so that when we come back to the board, we can actually have some phases and numbers to look at, because the discussion we had at BG&amp;T was there may be economies of scale in having somebody do a larger section of the wall with a couple of crews as opposed to coming in and doing one section of the wall at a time. Further question? The longest motion we've had at a board meeting in quite some time. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Thanks to Mr. Wong and for, Mr. Cummings for updating us on that situation. Brings us to the portion of the agenda entitled Consent. For that, I will turn to the Chair of Finance, Mr. McNeven.
Finance Committee met and reviewed the receipts and disbursements, and I so moved to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
I've got a question on the two vans. One from Ford and one from Chevy. What, how do we come about buying vans?
Did you get Jim's email response today?
No.
I responded to you early this morning.
I think it was pretty clear. We didn't get it. So, we can run down.
No, I didn't, I didn't check no emails, so I don't.
Okay. Yeah, the first van was part of the eleven-twelve budget, and we bid that in February, last February, and it was ordered in March, and it actually took six months to deliver. But just prior to getting that, we went out for bids to the three local car dealers, Ford, Dodge, and Chevy, and the Dodge dealer opted not to bid. And so, we're waiting for this van to come in, because we're one short. And in the meantime, Glacier Valley Ford had a van that was special ordered for someone that they refused to take, and they offered it to us for less than what our bid was last, last February. I called Sean immediately and asked if there was a potential to do this. Finance Committee was aware that we were going to do that, so we went ahead and we purchased both of those vans on a three-year lease purchase, and both of them go to the maintenance shop. The one replaces the nineteen ninety-two van, and the other one replaces the nineteen ninety-five van.
Wasn't one of these vans involved in an accident or something?
It was, we had our two thousand eight was involved in an accident, and that's still in the repair shop. It's not drivable. And we have our, one of our year two thousand vans that was ruined, and that one's been repaired and really is back in service.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, there's a motion and a second for the September receipts and disbursements. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Brings us to the personnel recommendations, of which I'm not aware of any resignations. We do have a couple of new hires. Your slide is background in your board packet. The first is Chris Rashchick, and that is for a forty percent school psychologist position. The salary placement on that position is at D seven. And the second is for Jennifer Dodd. That is a speech and language position at forty percent. The salary placement for that is at B nine. Any discussion? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion for those two.
I move to approve Chris and Jennifer at forty percent each.
Second.
Motion by Mearing, seconded by Vetro. Vetro, any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. I'm not aware of any approval postings. We do have an approval request for a long-term substitute teacher. That is Sandy Perry at Al Beerman in a reading specialist position, and that is for, is she in that position now?
Yes, just during.
And the duration, we're looking through the end of the semester, probably?
First week of December.
Okay. So, I would entertain a motion for the approval of that long-term.
I move to approve Sandra Perry in the long-term substitute at Al Beerman.
Second.
Motion by Mearing, seconded by Cummings. Discussion. Hearing none, those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Brings us to the portion of the agenda entitled New Business. First on that agenda is the approval of the band trip to New York this coming spring in April of 2012, and we have to represent for band tonight.
Hi, my name's Amber Anderson. I'm the band board president.
I'm Amber Wilkinson, and I'm the vice president of band board.
I'm Emily Meyer, and I'm the treasurer of band.
So, we have a proposed band trip for after spring break in April. We would leave April eleventh, which is a Wednesday, about halfway through the day, and then we would be back the following Sunday, so we'd be back in school by Monday. We wouldn't miss any school that day, because Wednesday is our early release, and we leave around two-ish, so we don't think that, it shouldn't be before that, so we wouldn't miss any school for that. It would just be the Thursday party. And Amber also approached our school nurse, Mrs. Cohn, and she seemed willing to, yeah, she was excited. She was glad we came up and asked if she would be willing to participate. And so, that would be really nice, because she would be in charge of all medications and making sure students have those and handling that situation, so that everybody would, we would have to put a shepherd in charge of something like that. The tour is only every other year, so this year is a tour year, so the juniors, this would be their only chance to go, if we went this year. So, the main thing, which is really important on the trip, is we play a concert at the Statue of Liberty right when we get there, and there's usually a pretty good-sized crowd. We play patriotic songs and then a couple other fun songs. And then they also have the opportunity to go off with their groups and go up the Statue of Liberty, or just go back to Ellis Island to walk around the museum.
Which I know that's something that's really important, because I have, like, my ancestors wrote down, like, how they came through there and their stories, so getting to see someplace like that, right on the venue floor, would be a cool scene, family history.
And I'm the only one of us three who have gone on the trip previously.
And I know, like, some reasons for me wanting to go, not just cultural, cultural experience, but getting to see Broadway, and where some, some students who are currently in band might end up someday, or on a smaller scale, the Broadway in different areas near us, but just getting to see that level of professionalism and big performances like that, that you only get to hear of usually, so.
And then we also have a little walking tour around Ground Zero, and we visit the Lincoln Center and have a tour of the Metropolitan Opera House, which is near Juilliard. And then we also have a chance to see Times Square, which is exciting for many kids. And, like she said, Broadway. And then last year, we went, or the year before, we went to Chinatown, so it was cool, seeing the different parts of New York.
And one of the reasons we don't go on spring break is because a lot of people have conflicting family vacations, so it cuts down on the numbers. And price-wise too, if it's not during spring break, when a lot of people are off, prices are higher then, because they know they're going to have bigger crowds there for vacation. And also, the traffic isn't as bad, because there's less noise there in the city.
Hey, Kevin.
We, we don't need to make you keep.
Kevin, I moved to approve the trip.
Come back with a PowerPoint.
I want to see the Times Square.
Is there a second? Seconding. Motion by Mr. Borkenagin, seconded by Mr. Mortimer to approve the trip. Just a side note, is not the band book out and about in the community for sale as of today?
It's up November first.
November first? Oh, some of them are out and about.
Oh, no.
This guy's got connections.
I have the answer.
Okay. Just trying to get a plug in from the band.
Maybe the counterfeit band books are out. Kevin's got a copy, yeah.
Any further discussion?
I, in 2010, a hundred students and adults went on this trip. There is hope for the arts. You might want to add to your itinerary, a stop at Liberty Square in New York and say hello to the Occupy Wall Street people. Send them my regards. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, have a good trip.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience waiting today.
That's extracting a palm of flowers.
Next up under New Business is the Arrow Newman Stadium Track Project. This is also a culmination of the BG&amp;T committee meeting last week, as we were directed by the board to go through the architect, architect designs that were presented. Mr. Cummings, Mr. Mortimer, and myself were all part of that meeting. Mr. Cummings, do you, I mean, I can highlight it if you wish.
I'll let you and Ed take care of it this time here. Check it out.
You want to start, or you want me to?
Well, I, I'll just say a few things. I think we were all impressed with, what, Point of Beginning, is it? Point of Beginning Architects. They seemed like a younger group. They seemed very energetic, very personable, and they answered most of the questions that we wanted answered. They seemed real enthusiastic, and I felt like they felt that we were real important to them during your discussion, and like, I felt like we were a priority to them, not that they had four or five other jobs going. And one thing that's interesting, that these folks said, when they hire the subs, they don't mark up the subs. So, whatever the subs cost is what it cost us. So, that was kind of interesting, that was kind of different.
Also, I like the part of, part of it, they try to do business locally in local subs and like that, and work with the locals, people around here as far as cost savings, and fitting the job in to your budget. I know there's some discussion going around about rebuilding whole track and different parts and press boxes and stuff like this. This is basically to rebuild the track. There's other things that could be added on later on if funds become available, but basically, it's replacing the track.
So, the more, when this goes through, it's just going to be the track, the field, and drainage, period?
Right. Some businesses have come forward and are going to fund a scoreboard, a sound system, and we have fifty thousand dollars in fundraising so far for that project. So, I assume that once the vision is out there of the track, that there'll be some booster clubs coming forward and people with continued donations.
Well, it's also moving the pits, the long jump, the high jump.
Right, but I mean, it's not concerning the press box or the bleachers.
Well, but you never know until you lay it all out of whether or not it runs into the light, you know, if, if the lighting is an issue, isn't appropriate, isn't correctly placed. I mean, until it gets designed, I don't know, I'd hate to say this is the only thing we're paying for is just the track. You know, there could be other issues.
Right, and I can understand it. I mean, I just wanted to make sure it's, it's a need and not a want.
And just to be clear to the other board members that weren't part of the BG&amp;T discussion, we did have some discussion about an additional ninth lane. And the reason for that is we would be able to host sectionals, which would bring in additional concession revenues as well as business into our community. It remains to be seen whether or not we'd be able to fit that lane in and what the additional costs would be for that. So, that will probably be part of the discussion moving forward.
And I think it's very appropriate. I mean, I think it's, there certainly is tremendous opportunities for us as a community to, to bring in other things. And again, if that's a requirement of sectionals, then I think that's important. I know there's a lot of discussion, and I've heard this in the past with predicting track, that we do have a good central location for a lot of schools, but certainly not when you have a track that has the holes that it had in it. But, so, if that's something that could be done, I think that's, it precludes us to do that, so.
Well, part of, part of the, we had three, as was mentioned, the three presentations, they were all about forty-five minutes long. The Point of Beginning, in contrast to Retler and, and... The Point of Beginning, in contrast to Retler and MSA, I think it was very, they were very aware of the fact that we had a defined project we were trying to do. We weren't trying to put in $220,000 worth of lechers on the west side. Lechers are very expensive, that was mentioned to us, but I think they have a very good idea that we have a budget we are trying to work with them, and that was one of the concerns when we heard some of the other presentations in particular from Retler, which, I mean, they're a fine firm, but they started talking about our grand plan for our facilities, and all of a sudden, there's a $10 million figure and a $3 million figure, and we're trying to talk about a half a million dollars that we have to spend on the track. So I think that the gentleman from Point of Beginning, which they shared with us their history, which is a very rich history, and I concur with everything that Mr. Mortimer said in regards to, this was, this is going to be their project, they're not going to have somebody else sitting here guarding this project, they are going to be watching this project, and I think they're very, very willing to work with us, whether it be board representation or Buildings and Grounds Business Office representation on the project, and they were very aware of the board's desire relayed through BGNT to make sure that we contact local contractors, and that's not always going to be feasible, because sometimes there's specific things that have to be done that somebody locally may not be able to do, but I think they truly got all of that, and their presentation was very impressive. And it was tailored to their...